We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 15th, August 15th, 2024. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegories.
The Pledge of Allegories to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Platsner, please call the room.
Commissioner Knoblock, here. Commissioner No, here. Commissioner Heikala, here. Commissioner Casey is absent. Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here. Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next is the approval of our minutes from our July 18th, 2024 meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. H-
I move approval of our minutes from July 18th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion by Heikala, second by Knoblock. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the minutes are approved. Our first order of business this evening is Planning Cases 24-14 and 24-15, a site plan and preliminary plat for September Sun Architecture LLC, 10701 Butternut Street, Northwest. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz, members of the Planning Commission. So you're all well aware of this item by now, but this is the property on the corner of Butternut Street and University where a 34-unit townhome development was proposed by the applicant. That proposal was dependent on the City Council approving the rezoning from office to moderate-density residential. At the August 5th meeting, the City Council voted to deny the request to rezone property from office to MDR. Thus, the Planning Commission are -- I'm sorry, the city staff are recommending denial of the application based on the finding that because the property is owned office and townhomes are not listed as a permitted use in the office district, what's being proposed would not be a permitted use on the subject property. This is still a public hearing that has remained open since previous meetings, but that is all that I have to present on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Platsner? All right, at this time, I will reopen the public hearing for both the preliminary plat and the site plan. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearings and limit comments to the Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki?
I'll move -- make a motion in Planning Case 24-14 to not approve the proposed site plan based on the findings in our packet as well as -- can I do 15 at the same time?
I think so.
Okay, 24, 15 as well. I'll make a motion to recommend denial of the preliminary plat based on the findings as are in our packet.
I'll second that.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the cases are not approved. And the decision on the site plan is a decision by the Planning Commission, can be appealed within 10 business days if someone so chooses. The preliminary plat is a recommendation and will be heard by the City Council at their September 3rd meeting. Our next case, Planning Case 24-22, a site plan for Family Promise at 34095th Avenue. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So what I have before you today is a request for a site plan approval for an eight-unit apartment building and to use the existing single-family home for a total of nine units for Family Promise at 34094th Avenue. This is located just off Coon Rapids Boulevard on 94th Avenue, between 94th and 95th Avenue, where 94th Avenue connects Holly Street with Flintwood Street, in that triangle over there. It's 1.46 total acres, so the main parcel is 1.38 acres, and then there's a second parcel that's 0.08 acres that the applicant is proposing to put part of the stormwater retention pond on. The map shown is a little bit confusing. The primary parcel does actually straddle 94th Avenue, so that small triangle to the southwest of 94th Avenue is part of parcel one, and parcel two is on the southeast. It's the other triangular-shaped parcel southeast of the primary site. So this is within the Port Evergreen zoning district where multifamily residential uses are permitted use, and the land use designation is commercial mixed use. So the commercial mixed-use land use area allows a residential density of 10 to 50 units per acre throughout the entire designated area citywide essentially. So what's being proposed is less than the minimum threshold of 10 units per net acre. However, since it's not -- would not bring the designation, the designated area citywide below 10 units an acre, it does meet that density requirement for land use. All of the surrounding properties have the same zoning and the same land use except for the park to the north across Highway 610, which is very distant from what is being proposed. And there are commercial uses to the west and southwest and south of the subject property, and single-family residential uses to the east. So what's being proposed by Family Promise is a new eight-unit residential building, apartment building, and then they are proposing to continue using the existing single-family home for an additional unit for a total of nine units. And I believe the applicant is here tonight, and they, at the request of the Commission, may speak a little bit more on the mission of the organization, Family Promise. However, this is -- what's being proposed is a standard apartment unit, but Family Promise does focus on residents who are transitioning out of homelessness essentially. And I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant entirely because they're better at articulating their mission than I am, but essentially what they provide for families that are transitioning out of homelessness is a standard apartment for a medium-term lease, and I believe that's usually no more than a year. And I'll let the applicant correct me if it's often different than that, but my understanding is that the maximum lease for most of the residents that they house is one year. So what is being proposed is a 10,606-square-foot apartment building on the site, and this would include several amenities on the outside, including front and back patios with seating, sidewalks, a children's play area, a pet area, and then a 13-stall parking lot and trash enclosure just to the east. The applicant is proposing to use the existing parking across 94th Avenue on the office site. And to clarify, the main offices for Family Promise of Anoka County are on the site just to the southwest of the site, and part of that parking lot is on the subject property or on parcel one, the section across 94th Avenue. The applicant is proposing to use that existing parking lot across 94th Avenue for excess parking for the development if need be. And they are proposing also an infiltration basin on the southeast corner of the site. As far as the building, what the applicant is proposing is a 30-foot-tall two-story building, so that's 30 foot measured to the center of the gable, 40 feet to the roof peak, which does meet the requirements in the Port District. The building they're proposing is -- does meet, according to -- or as far as city staff believe, does meet the requirements of the Port and River Rapids overlay districts with varied building materials, articulation, and roof articulation as well. What's being proposed are three two-bedroom units with a minimum size of 850 square feet, and five efficiency units with a minimum size of 528 square feet, both of which are above the minimum unit size allowed for those types of units. And then interior amenities being proposed by the applicant include a community room with a kitchen, an indoor play area, laundry room, as well as new staff offices or additional staff offices for Family Promise staff. And to be clear, the apartments themselves would have all of the amenities standard in a market-rate apartment, including kitchen, bathrooms, everything standard. There would just be additional laundry room, kitchen kind of gathering spaces, including the community room in the public areas. So this is an image, if you see, on the presentation of the first floor, floor plan. So on the left side there shows mostly communal areas, including the kitchen, play area, community room, and on the right side you have one of the two-bedroom units and one of the efficiency units, as well as the new Family Promise offices and the laundry room. And then on the second floor, you have the other four efficiency units and the two other two-bedroom units. And then I can go back to these on request, but these are just the elevations that the applicant provided, front and rear, and then here are the two side elevations. In terms of lot coverage and open space, what's being proposed is 32% of the lot being covered by either hardscape or structures, which is less than the 80% maximum allowed. The applicant is providing 5,805 square feet of common open space throughout the developed part of the site, which is above the 2,750 square feet that would be required based on the unit makeup, as well as the covered patios mentioned earlier, and the children's play area and the pet area. As far as parking, Family Promise are proposing part of their parking lot to be across 94th Avenue. However, staff do not think that this would be an issue in general. There are 21 spaces required to meet the 2.25 spaces-per-unit requirement in the Port District for residential uses. And then the parking lot to the south has 10 spaces that are required to meet the office use requirement, which is 200 square feet, or one space for 200 square feet. So it's a 2,000-square-foot office building. 10 spaces on the parking lot to the south would be required to be set aside for that. 43 spaces are provided in the parking lot to the south, and then the applicant has shown eight proof-of-parking spaces or an area that could be developed into eight new spaces if necessary, which leaves 33 spaces available on the southwest lot. In addition to the 13 on the subject property, you have well above the 2.25 spaces-per-unit required, about 5.1 spaces-per-unit. One of the conditions that staff are proposing is for this parking lot to the southwest to be striped because it is not currently striped as a condition of approval for this project, and I believe the applicant was planning on striping the parking lot anyway. And then staff, also planning and engineering staff, think that there is no need for the applicant to provide additional pedestrian infrastructure or striping for crossing 94th Avenue. And the two reasons for this are that 94th Avenue sees minimal traffic. It's one of the least busy streets in this part of the city because it only connects Holly Street to Flintwood Street. There are, I think there are no driveways onto the street except for what's being proposed as part of this development, and it doesn't really make any connections that aren't already made by Coon Rapids Boulevard just to the south. So you see very little traffic on the street. And as well, the applicant does believe that no more than nine spaces would actually be needed as most of the residents that they house either have one vehicle or no vehicles, and it's very rare that residents would have more than one vehicle. So this is an image showing the parking proposed on the northeast part of the site, and then across 94th Avenue, the current existing parking on the southwest part of the site, as well as the eight spaces that could be built out if needed. And only 10 of those spaces are required by the city to be set aside for the existing office use. And lastly, landscaping. So the applicant is proposing landscaping that generally meets the city requirements with the exception of a hedge or berm between the proposed parking lot and the single-family residential uses to the east. This is something that the city requires to screen parking from any existing single-family residential use. And the applicant also is not able to put overstory and evergreen trees along the front of the site, along 94th Avenue, where they would generally be required to because of existing utilities. So they've included trees generally along the area close to the front of the building without being directly in front of the building, which is the best that they were able to do to meet that landscaping requirement due to the location of the utilities. So staff generally think that substantially that requirement is met. And here's an image of the landscaping, and I just realized I did not include the most updated landscaping, but what you would see was to the southeast, there would be a few more trees, three more trees added in front of the stormwater pond in order to meet the tree requirement along the front of the site. So the applicant is asking for just one flexibility, which is a request to waive the requirement that one parking space per unit be covered. The applicant is proposing zero covered parking spaces. Generally, for residential parking, one space is required to be covered, and one -- and the remaining spaces can be open, so either in a garage or covered by a roof. And the applicant has stated that they don't believe that covered spaces would be necessary, with some of the reasoning being that many of the Family Promise residents don't own a vehicle and that the apartment leases are not long-term, so this wouldn't be permanent housing for any of the residents. With that, the city staff are recommending approval of the site plan for Family Promise based on the conditions that I have listed. I did add an additional condition between submitting the staff report and creating the presentation. So there's an added condition, number seven, for park dedication, which was absent from the staff report. So if there is a motion to recommend approval, if the Planning Commission could reference the conditions as shown in the presentation as opposed to the staff report, that would be appreciated. And then staff are also recommending approval of the dimensional flexibility request. And this is a public hearing, and that's all I have for presentation on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Platsner?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Platsner, as far as the three-foot berm along the parking, is, I mean typically we've allowed any kind of screening. Is there's, is that at the request of the applicant that we do a berm versus a fence versus something else, or?
Thank you, Commissioner Geisler. No, this can be a berm or a hedge or any sort of screening that appropriately screens the site from the adjacent single-family residential. It doesn't have to be a berm.
Okay, so we're flexible.
We're flexible on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner No.
Mr. Platsner, it's in like two of the overheads we saw, much as semi-parking in the, it's like a street that goes between Family Promise and the outlot there the city owns. You just had it a couple slides before. I'm assuming it's not allowed there, you know, as we talk about people going back and forth into the parking lot, or semis are coming around and pulling down that road. Is that, are semis allowed there to park overnight, or?
Commissioner No, I don't believe semis would be allowed to park on the street there. That's a good observation. Generally, my, and I don't know for sure, but generally I think because this road is so seldom used, I think it's often considered a safe space to park because it's very unlikely that someone would see the semis parked there and complain about it. But I don't know this for sure. This is just something that I've seen in other kind of out-of-the-way streets in the city and others. So that's my best guess for why there are semis seen there, but I don't believe they would be allowed to park there overnight.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Commissioner No, on the latest street view, it looks like there's no parking signs along that street now, so it could just be a timing between the
Oh, nice.
-- the satellite image versus what's there.
I'll just, you know, as I look at it, if we're not going to have any additional pedestrian walkways or something across 94th Avenue, but if semis are coming around, we just want to make sure that's not happening, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions at this time? And anything the petitioner would like to add, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Frye. I'm the Executive Director for Family Promise and also Coon Rapids resident up in, on the north end of town. I've been the Director for Family Promise for almost nine and a half years, and this is an exciting project for us, an opportunity for us to help serve families in a very dignified way, families who are struggling in our own community. I do say "families" because we only serve families with minor children involved, so every family that would be coming in has minor children, and we have attempted to design this place in a way that the kids won't even necessarily recognize that their family is part of a homeless program because this is an apartment building. It is separated from our offices and the space where we run our activities and pieces like that. We have recently moved into the area. This has been really great for us, and we are excited to have the opportunity to expand in this way with this property. This is a new kind of development for us, and we've been studying the different ways to be able to offer very dignified and homelike setting for families and something that would be secure for them, knowing that we have minor children, many of them very young. As part of the family's, security has always been an important part for us, and so to be able to have this in a setting that is very homelike, very much matches with the neighborhood, we are excited for that. I would love to hear if you have any questions for me specifically on the project or how we've gotten to the point that we have.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Mr. Frye, I was just curious, is there any sort of benefits or is there a program that helps during that one-year period to ensure they're successful, can move on, so you can bring in additional families?
Right, that's a great question. So it's not just a come and sit and wait out your turn kind of thing. We have case management. The expectation is that within 90 days, our families are to a point that they're ready to be moving into housing of their own, given the housing crunch that we all know exists. That can take a while from the time that they've hit that moment, but they work really hard with our case managers to improve their standing with past landlords, to increase their income and ways that they can be sustainable into the future, and to work with that. I will also say too, just as a broader piece, shelter isn't all that we do. In fact, getting this up to eight families in this building and the one in the home that's there, of those nine families, that would still only be about a quarter of the families that we serve in a year. Most of our work is with prevention, keeping people from needing shelter in the first place. And that mostly will be taking place in our, I shouldn't say mostly, that takes place in our offices on Coon Rapids Boulevard. That wouldn't be happening in this building.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Heikala.
Can you tell me if there is a limit to the number of occupants per unit?
Yeah, it depends on the size of the unit. That's why we have a variable size of the unit so that we can have some for larger families and some for small. Our average family size over the years has been, from year to year, sometime between about 3.1 and 3.8 people per family, oftentimes a very small.
Did you say that again, 3.?
3.1 to 3.8 people per family.
And that's even in the, not 3.8 in the efficiency?
Right, right, yep. So some families that would be larger would be in the bigger units, the smaller families would be able to go in the smaller ones.
Could you tell me, do you currently run any other properties such as this?
We have two houses that we have families in right now. The one is on the property in question, so the house that's there has a family currently living in it. We also have a house that is in the city of Ramsey that has a family staying there as well too that's in our program.
But no, no multifamily buildings?
No, that's true.
And what are your intentions? Do you plan on adding additional buildings to the rest of the property in the future, or?
That is definitely a long-term option and plan that we have moving forward. There are no specific plans at this time. We'd like to take the learnings that we get from this building, what we learned from that, before we would consider a next phase that would be on the northern end of the property.
And then could you please give me an idea, what is the size of the children's play area and the pet area, and are there any equipment provided for the play area?
There would be some equipment for the play area. For, I don't know exactly the sizing if.
There's a dog area that's, I'm sorry, Andy Madsen with LHB.
Need to come to the microphone so the secretary can pick you up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andy Madsen with LHB, the project architect for the project. So there is a dog area, and there's also a tot lot. The tot lot will have equipment provided. The rough areas for the tot lot, I would say, is approximately 500 square feet, and the dog area is roughly 200 square feet.
And you just indicated with red circles on one map there at one point, could you explain which area is which?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is City Planner Max Platsner. The tot lot is the one to the north, and the dog area is the one to the south, I believe.
And what kind of surface would the tot lot have?
At this point, that's undetermined. We haven't gotten that far with the design, but I believe it would be likely wood chips or sod or grass.
And are those areas fenced? Excuse me.
The dog area is fenced. The tot lot is not fenced.
And one additional question I have. This is a two-story building, but I don't see anything about an elevator. What kind of ADA provisions do you have or requirements do you have to meet?
That is correct. We are providing two type A accessible units, and those are the two first-floor units, so the one efficiency and then the one two-bedroom unit. Those will be type A accessible, so. You are correct, there is no elevator in the building.
Commissioner, have any other questions for the petitioners at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Just one general question. You guys okay with all the conditions that are already listed in the packet? You're aware of them and comfortable with them? Thank you.
All right, we may have more questions for you later. Thank you. All right, we do need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 24-22, a site plan for Family Promise at 34095th Avenue. Anyone here to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing and limit comments to the Commission. Mr. Platsner, we don't have any material samples or anything?
No material samples, Chair Schwartz.
And how representative are the colors and the drawings that have been provided?
I may defer to the applicant to respond to that one.
Commissioners, I would say that the, as much as we like the color scheme currently, I don't think that that's completely been determined, but I will say certainly the materials that we're showing there, that I would say is solid, obviously. The brick that's flanking the entry, it also includes the entry area, and then we've got fiber substrate panel and lap siding, a combination of the two in the white, and then the lap siding being in the blue and the red colors. Yeah, I guess I don't, if we have to commit to the colors now, we can, but I think it's to be studied as we continue into design development, so.
Well, normally part of the site plan is giving us samples of what the actual colors are so we know the compatibility of the buildings for the area. It's pretty hard to approve a site plan without knowing what color the building is going to be.
We can commit to the colors shown.
Should we possibly make that an additional condition then? Mr. Platsner?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm considering it. I don't believe that the Port District the Planning Commission can, has the discretion to add that to the conditions that the, the colors shown, um, are required to be the, the final colors. So I, I, I believe, yes, this can be added as a condition.
And Commissioner, what are, what are your thoughts? Do we want to have a condition on colors?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Um, I, I, I'm actually a little ambivalent on the colors, considering that it, it's kind of an end corner with borderline vacant lots to the south and only five single-family homes there and a freeway to the north. There isn't a whole lot of complementary areas. I do think if we want to make them commit to kind of the board and bat and brick and lap siding as materials, um, of complementary color palette, I think that's okay. But specifically these exact colors, I, I'm not as hung up on. Um, but I like, I like the design of the asphalt shingle, board bat verticals, the, the brick down below. It, it certainly adds a very nice texture. It looks like a really big house, not an apartment building. Um, so I, I think that further, further complements the mission and desire. So I, I, I'm okay with the materials, locking in the materials and letting the colors be slight variations of that availability and all that.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nabok.
Is, um, is it a possibility that we put a 11th recommendation in, in addition, or 11 would be the park dedication, but 12 would be, um, a color palette to be provided to the Planning Commission for consideration or for final review? Just so that it's not like?
Well, we're making the decision here this evening, uh, so it wouldn't come back to us.
That is correct.
Nothing for it to come, for us to come back to.
Yeah, Chair Schwartz, my recommendation is just that it would be if certain colors were extremely, which wouldn't be the case, but if it was considerably abhorrent or ridiculous colors, then it's something that could throw it, the application back to us.
Mr. Chair.
It's just a stopgap.
Maybe we could just make the, the recommendation that, um, the sit, that the applicant will work with the city staff on the coloring.
I second that, that's even better.
So add condition 12 to that, or?
We could do that if that's what, Mr. Nabok, I think, I think that's what you're trying to get, is just to make sure someone's checking the box.
Yes.
So if you want to add a 12th, that is something to the effect that the applicant will work with the city staff on a color scheme.
Mm-hmm.
For the materials. Mr. Passner?
Mr. Platsner?
You're not color finding?
Yes, and yes, seven is actually the park dedication, so. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler, Smokey.
If I could discuss, um, the flexibility being requested, the parking, um, with the enclosed space, I guess, I, this is kind of a question back to the applicant again too. I'm just thinking if these are families who are moving out of possibly homes and so forth, um, some of them may have lawn mowers, et cetera, which I realize the circumstances that are bringing them, um, to this new, um, to this new home, but, um, I, I guess, are you concerned at all about where they would store, um, items or things like that? Um, I, I, I'm not a fan myself of row parking that's enclosed. Um, I think those tend to get pretty beat up and I'm not sure that that's the right answer either, so I don't have too much trouble with the outdoor parking, but what came to mind for me was items that they might bring along with them and where do they store them? Bicycles for kids, things like this, I don't know what that is going to look like.
Commissioner, uh, that is one of the reasons that we're asking for the, uh, to, to not have the covered parking. Um, some other, uh, organizations that have done other similar projects across the country that we've researched have found that having garages is problematic for storage.
Thank you.
Um, families in our program are limited to the storage that they can have reasonably within their units, so there would be checks for that too. Um, so they don't have space outside to do that other than the bike racks, uh, for bicycles.
Thank you.
Um, because, uh, it, it has.
For that reason?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
I, I could answer to the other part, is that, uh, it's very rare for us to have a family that is coming out of a home where they would have, uh, things like lawn mowers and, and stuff like that as well too.
Sure.
Um, but, uh, some families do have, um, any of the, as you well know, plethora, um, storage units around the city.
Sure.
Commissioner Hinkle.
Uh, maybe somebody can point off to me, is there a bike rack?
Um, I don't know if they, uh, uh, sorry, Chair, Commissioners, I don't know if they show up on the, um, specific plan here, but there is, uh, back toward the tot lot on the, the side away from the road, there is a set of bike racks by that entrance, um, that are intended.
Commissioner Hinkle.
Are you confident that the tot lot does not need to be fenced?
The, uh, there is intent around that too in two ways. One is, um, considering like the, my, my own yard, um, on the other side of Coon Rapids is not, uh, fenced in with the idea of, of it feeling a little bit more like home. Uh, the second one is with the intent that, uh, it can, it's, it's much easier to, um, ensure that the parents are present when the kids are in the tot lot if it doesn't look like a place that you close them in and let them go. Our intent would be that the parents would be out there with them, um, to do that. So that's another one of those, uh, pieces of learning that we got from studying some other places.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
Just a point of clarification, I think you mentioned earlier that we're making a decision this evening, but I believe this is a recommendation, correct?
Well, but that's what I'm saying, we're making a decision to recommend.
I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
I just meant that this was going to be the last time that we would see the site plan. Anyone else with any comments, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Noll.
Let me just say as we, we look at what they're trying to do here, as it winds up with our comprehensive plan, um, in our comp plan, it says we're looking for 240 new homes or places to live that support people that are under 30% of the area median income. I gotta imagine a lot of those people would fall into that, into that category. And I think partnering with a group that's established, that's got funding, that, um, has a plan would be a great way to help these people get to sustainable housing down the road. Cause I will say, you know, if we choose to do nothing, people are still there homeless, so. Leave it there.
Commissioner, any, anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So I, I agree with Commissioner Noll, I think this is a great amenity for the city and for the county as a whole. Um, I think this is a, a benefit that will help everybody in our community. So, uh, in that, in Planning Case 24-22, I move that we recommend approval, uh, with the proposed site, uh, site plan with the conditions listed in the presentation plus a 12th condition of, uh, the materials will be, uh, the, the applicant will work with the city staff on the material selection.
One second.
Uh, Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nabok.
So can I clarify that item 11 is the park dedication as recommended in the presentation?
The, the.
Seven. Is that seven?
Seven, when key editor, yeah.
Number seven says all parking areas on site be led to one foot camp.
Per Mr. Passner. The presentation was, seven was the parking and everything else from seven was moved down to one.
In the presentation, yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Passner's going to pull those up, just so the record's clear.
Chair Schwartz, if I may, I, I included a new, uh, condition between the staff report and the presentation, but I put it as number seven, um, because that is the order that the conditions are generally in, usually the last few conditions are standard rather than unique to the proposal. Um, so apologies for the confusion there.
So we had the motion by Geisler and the second by, by Noll?
Mm-hmm.
Now is to also include the dimensional flexibility?
Mr. Chair, I will do that on a second motion after we pass this one, just for clarity.
All right, motion for the site plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that motion carries. That's a recommendation by the Planning Commission and we heard by the City Council after September 3rd meeting.
And then, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
And then in Planning Case 24-22, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the dimensional flexibility for parking, finding that the modifications are necessary to respond to the site conditions, result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities, and further the intent of the Port District.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Smokey, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that also is a recommendation to the City Council and will be heard at the September 3rd meeting. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, our next case, Planning Case 24-23, a site plan for Tronson Reserve, Palmer Architects Limited, 1354 121st Avenue. Mr. Platsner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Um, so I have before you a site plan approval request for Tronson Reserve on 121st Avenue, just east of Hanson Boulevard. Um, a very similar, uh, site plan for multi-family residential in the moderate-density residential district, meeting the moderate-density residential standards, um, was approved by the Planning Commission back in 2022. Um, however, the applicant never went forward with any building permits and chose to bring forward a somewhat modified version of, of a very similar, um, site plan, uh, for Planning Commission decision here in 2024. Um, so I will briefly touch on some of the differences between what was approved in 2022 and, and what is being requested now, but I'm also just going to go over the site plan as requested, um, just to, um, refresh anyone's memories and also just to touch on every element of the plan. Um, so the site is a 4.56 acre site, however, 1.25 acres of the site are delineated wetland, leaving 3.31 buildable acres. However, when determining residential density, um, the city does not, um, net out delineated wetlands, so the entire parcel would be considered, um, in order to determine whether the proposal meets the requirement of, um, five to nine units of density within the MDR zoning district. Um, and there are single-family residences to the west and south, um, a, a pond and wetland area to the east and then, um, multi-family, um, residences to the north across 121st Avenue. So this is within the MDR, moderate-density zoning district, as well as guided MDR, or moderate-density for land use. Um, and, uh, multi-family residential at five to nine units an acre, um, townhomes especially, not especially, town, townhomes as well are permitted in this zoning district. Um, and what's being proposed is a 35-unit townhome development, um, with nine separate townhome buildings. That's one eight-unit building, one six-unit building and seven three-unit buildings. And this would, uh, bring the site to, and I probably didn't include it in the presentation, but I believe it is, um, eight and some change, uh, units per acre, but it's, uh, between eight and nine units an acre, and I, I can look up that exact number at the request of the Planning Commission. Um, as far as amenities, as well as the, um, units themselves, the garages in the units and the private patios, um, provided to each unit, are, uh, a children's play area for the entire development, as well as, uh, an open Ramada with barbecue grills, um, walking paths, um, with benches and bike racks and, um, additional parking spaces, including 19 common or guest parking spaces. Um, the applicant is also proposing a hammerhead fire turnaround on the south side of the site, and this is at the, um, request of the fire department. Um, so the difference between, um, what was proposed in 2022 and what's being proposed now, I'll just go over a couple of the major differences. Um, so what I have here on the presentation was the site plan that was proposed and approved back in 2022. Um, and this had 30 townhome units and one single-family unit, so five, or four, four total units, um, have been added between 2022 and now for a total of 35 units, all of which are townhomes. Um, the truck, the fire truck turnaround that was proposed back in 2022 is a cul-de-sac. This has been replaced with a hammerhead, which gives a little bit more space, um, or I guess was the hammerhead turnaround takes up less space than the cul-de-sac does. Um, the children's playground has been added and the townhome units fronting 121st Avenue, um, that had an overhang that encroached two feet into the front setback, um, from 121st Avenue, um, are proposed to be moved back, um, compared to the 2022 proposal, um, so that the overhang meets that setback requirement as well. Um, as far as the site, there are 1.25 acres of existing wetland, a small part of the development being proposed would be in that wetland area, so 0.05 acres of wetland would be filled as part of the development, and this is, um, pertaining to, or, or subject to, um, approval by the Coon Creek Watershed District, as well as meeting all of the, um, engineering comments provided by our engineer department. So 1.2 acres of the existing wetland would remain on-site and would not be developed. Um, open space being proposed, the applicant created, um, this map showing what they are counting as public and private open space, or it's a common and private open space. Um, there's quite a bit of common open space being proposed. So what's required, um, is 550 square feet per unit, which would be 19,250 square feet on this site. What's being proposed is over 50,000 square feet, not including the wetlands, and so this is mostly setback area and other area between the parking areas and the buildings themselves. Uh, and then in terms of private open space, 350 square feet per unit are required, um, and that is what's being provided by the, um, applicant, including the private patio on the rear of the units, as well as space on the other side of the, um, sidewalk from the units. And, uh, this is, is kind of standard for, uh, multi-family residential units to have private open space be kind of separated, not necessarily completely contiguous. Um, so city staff are okay with, um, doing it that way. Um, in terms of parking, uh, 2.25 spaces per unit are required, this would be 88 spaces total, uh, and 2.66 spaces per unit are proposed. So each unit would have two garage stalls, meeting the, um, parking space per unit requirement, um, all of which would be covered. And the, um, remaining spaces would be common stalls or, um, guest stalls, which there are 19 common stalls and then an additional four, um, ADA compliance stalls for a total of 23 stalls.
Mr. Platsner?
Yes.
Uh, your heading on there says Family Promise.
Oh my goodness, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, and I did it on another one too. Apologies, that was a typo on my part.
Just, just to, uh, explain to the public that, uh, we're talking about Tronson and not Family Promise.
That's correct. Thanks for clarifying on that. My apologies for the confusion there. Um, so the, this, this slide, I just have the, um, elevations, the proposed elevation shown, um, showing the roof articulation and the, um, the articulation of the buildings or of, of the units themselves, where every other unit generally, with, with some exceptions, would be, um, would have an overhang to it, two feet out from the rest of the units, so there would be some articulation in the fronts of the units themselves, um, as well as varied materials, um, and roof lines. And the garage, proposed garage would face the internal street and the, the back door, um, the pedestrian entrance would face the private rear patio. Um, here, the applicant has provided the floor plans for their two different unit types, so it's, it'd be two-story units, um, with three bedrooms each, one bedroom on the first floor and two bedrooms on the second floor, as well as the majority of the living space on the second floor, with the garage also on the first floor. And then this is, um, in the presentation here, the, uh, rendering that the applicant provided of what the buildings would look like after construction. Um, in terms of landscaping, the applicant has proposed landscaping that, that meets and exceeds the city requirements. Um, so, um, generally, the only, um, So generally, the only landscaping item that would need to be addressed in the conditions if it is not provided would be the screening between the parking area and the single-family residential to the west. And staff have added, I believe I added a condition in here, that that screening, that berm, fence, or hedge be added if it is not already present. There is a change in grade on the west, along the west edge of the proposal that is more than three feet, thus probably constituting a berm. But staff would likely want to confirm that before determining that the landscape requirements are entirely met. Other than that element, the landscape requirements are met. So with that, city staff are recommending approval of the site plan, similar to the Family Promise item. I did add two conditions into the presentation that were not present in the staff report. One being that the final landscaping must meet the requirements detailed, so that staff have the ability to require that the berm or hedge be added on the west side of the site. That the parking areas on-site be lit to one-foot candle. There's one area of the parking lot that I noticed was not lit to one-foot candle, which is a requirement, as well as a correction on the park dedication amount. I had calculated park dedication based on 34 units and said 35 units. So the correct amount of park dedication would be $49,350, as opposed to what was included in the packet. So that's all I have in terms of a presentation, and this would also be a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Platsner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Noel.
Mr. Platsner, are these intended to be owner-occupied within HOA? Commissioner, no, no, these are be intended to be rentals and would be, the entire site would not be platted and would be owned by the owner of the development.
Okay, just follow-up. Is there, you know, we've seen a number of rental townhome proposals that have come through. Is there a number that the cities, based on our need set, are we looking for in terms of rental townhomes in the city?
Thank you, Commissioner Noel. There is not a number specific to rentals that I'm aware of. Usually it's about residential density regardless of whether it's owner-occupied or rental. And so there is essentially, based on the 2040 comprehensive plan, a density and a number of residents that is projected that the city is intending to meet, but it does not clarify whether those are owner-occupied or rental housing units.
Okay.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have a question for Planner Platsner. I don't, I didn't see any pictures on, especially on the townhomes with the private balcony facing 121st. Can I have an explanation or a picture of, will the private balcony or the area in the back, will it be enclosed? Will it be, like, what will the design or look of it be?
Thank you, Commissioner Nablock. I believe they would be enclosed, and I could have the applicant speak to it. On the elevations here, it does show a fence about four feet up along the rear. It's a little, it's showing, it's shown transparent, showing the door through that fence. So I may have the applicant clarify, but I do believe that a four-foot wall or fence is being proposed along the rear of those private patio areas.
Planner Platsner, follow-up. Is that for all of the 35 units?
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
And Mr. Platsner, could you point out on the site where the children's play area is?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. It is, and I didn't circle it, and that's my fault. I don't know if you can see my mouse here, but on the east side, there's the three-unit building that's north-south oriented. It's one of only two three-unit buildings that are north-south oriented. Just to the south of that, kind of in the very, very center of the site, on the east side of the road, is where the children's play area would be, and just to the south of that would be the open ramada with the barbecue grills.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
I have another question for Planner Platsner. These are all going to be rental units. My concern is the biking path and the parking on 121st Street. Is, has there been any consideration? You just need, I know there's 19 extra parking places for guests, but you have one and a half parties and that entire street will be full. I'm just, my concern is the impact of on-street parking if these are all going to be rental units. I understand that there's two parking spaces in each unit internally, but any function, any activity in that, I was just, is there any consideration to potential impact on parking on the street?
Thank you, Commissioner Nablock. The 2.25 parking spaces per unit requirement was designed to take into account something like functions, parties, anything, any unusual or uncommon event where there would be a lot more cars parked on the site than usual. And so the goal with that 2.25 spaces would be that even with, you know, Fourth of July parties, Labor Day parties, whatever, is happening, that there would not be a need for parking beyond that 2.5 spaces per unit. And the applicant is showing more than 2.25 spaces per unit. Thus, staff are satisfied with the amount of parking on-site and don't think that there will be an issue.
Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Platsner? Alright, thank you. A petition or anything they would like to add, please come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record.
I'm Mary Chesvelt, 11800 Axian Boulevard, Coon Rapids. So we were here before with a slightly different plan, and as you know, interest rates have gone up. We went to the bank. The real reason is simply that for rents, we could get $71,000, but the mortgage payment was going to be $69,000. It was not economically feasible. So we looked at a way that we would not impact wetlands. We went to the watershed, and we haven't impacted any more wetlands. We haven't impacted the water flow by eliminating the family house and adding a few more townhouses. And I met with my bank today and we're confident, I don't like "we," but confident that the basis points might go down 75 basis points in the next couple of months, and we think that this will economically work. In other words, everything, the patio out in front, our use of hot water heat, all of those things that we presented to you before are still there. We just needed to get more revenue. The city was really helpful. We had a meeting and said, should we go up three stories? Yep, that's permissible. We could add a few units. Yes, that's permissible. But we did not want to negate the integrity of the site with all the wonderful wetlands and things like that. And so I think we did a pretty good job of adding a few more units with keeping the development pretty much intact to what it was when we were here last time.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for petitioner? Do you have any material samples and/or color samples?
The printout that was submitted is basically what we're going to do with the brick and the siding board, which probably will look more like stucco, but we cannot use stucco. But if we want, if you want, we certainly can provide samples to the city before they issue the building permits. That's an easy task for us.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 24-23. A site plan for Tronson Reserve Palmer Architects Limited, 1354 121st Avenue. Anyone here to speak to this public hearing? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is John Schmick. I'm at 12162 Bluebird Circle, across the street from this project. I commend the developer for fixing the setback requirements and removing the single-family house. It's good improvements there. There is a rather significant issue that has not been addressed, and that is ordinance 8-1216, steep slopes. And that ordinance says anything beyond 18% slope cannot be disturbed or removed, disturbed or developed. There is a section on this property that, I don't know if you can see it, Unit 15 in Building G, that there is a slope that I've measured at 20 to 22%. It goes into the retaining wall, the sidewalk, the bathroom, and the garage of that unit. And under your ordinance, that cannot be disturbed. Now, you've changed the, the city has changed the zoning for medium density, that now you have to have a minimum of three units per structure. That wasn't in place when this project was first developed, first proposed to you in 2022. But now that it's in place, that slope eliminates Unit 15, and because that reduces that structure to two units, now you've got a problem with allowing the whole structure. So it's a pretty straightforward ordinance, 8-1216, 18% slope, cannot be disturbed. And this is a health and safety issue, so I'm not sure you can even give a variance on it. Now, beyond that, as you go to the private space in front of this structure, there's a retaining wall at the corner. It's five feet. Now, if your private space is beyond the sidewalk and beyond that retaining wall, how do you make that functional? That little bit of private space that's five feet below your retaining wall and slopes down into the wetland? There's a number of reasons why that structure should not be built. Now, the other issue is that this entire project, in my opinion, is not compatible with the neighborhood. In 2022, when it was first proposed, I did a survey of townhouse developments in the immediate area and found that the average density per unit of upland, usable land, was about 5, 5 and 1/4. What you're proposing here is over nine units per usable land area. That is a substantial deviation from the average in this neighborhood. Even the most dense developments in this neighborhood are probably six and a half. I think there's one at seven. And you're substantially higher than that. I mean, you've got so much stuff crammed into this usable area. I don't know if you're aware, the driveways on these buildings are only eight feet long. A standard Toyota Corolla is 15 feet. You can't even park a car in the driveway. This is a really, really dense development. And so I will open it to questions on the slope ordinance or anything else you want to ask about.
Thank you.
Nothing?
It's now a question-and-answer time, sir. Anyone else speak in public hearing?
Yeah, we live on 1401 120th.
Give your name, give your name, too, please.
My name's Terry Povick. We've lived there 40 years. And this is going to be in my backyard, all these townhouses. We've got deer, we've got turkeys, we've got beautiful trees. There's an old pig fence that the trees grew up in. The trees are that big around. Who, are they going to go down now, or what's going on? I don't want to look at that in my backyard. I don't know. I don't know. That's about all I got to say, but I don't approve of it.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gene Weiner, 12115 Bluebird Circle, across the street from where this, this development is going to take place. I, I'm concerned about our wildlife. Our turkeys, our geese, our deer that go through that area, which isn't going to happen anymore. Another thing, and I'm not a planner, but there's no parking in that area. I don't know how wide them streets are, but where there's a garage across the street from another garage, I think if you put two four-wheel drive, should be pickups that are 20, 20 feet long from one to the other, you'd never get through the street. Now, I might be wrong, but I'm just looking at the blueprint that I had to look at, and it's kind of hard reading them, okay? And I just think there's not enough parking for 35 units. And if they're going to be rented or sold, what is it going to be rented? Now, you're not looking at families necessarily. I came to the cities 50 years ago, three of us, four of us moved into a house. And you get single people, two cars. You can go down many streets in Coon Rapids with three-bedroom homes, and how many cars are sitting out in the driveway? More than, more than what we have there in that development. What are they going to do in the snow? When you get 60 or 80 inches of snow in the wintertime, where are they going to plow the snow? I don't know if any of this has been looked at. I realize that the architect is from Phoenix, Arizona. Well, they don't have snow there, you know, but we do here. And I don't know if, I am not saying that he didn't think about that, but, well, I wonder if he did. And fire. There's one, one entrance door to the unit, I believe. If there's a fire downstairs, how do they get out upstairs? Go through the windows? The only doors going in and out of the place is the garage door and one entrance door. And if the power goes out, the garage door don't go up. Now, I realize that you can pull the handle and lift it up, but still then, I, I think it's a bad plan. I just do. And I, I wanted to come up and speak my piece.
Thank you.
Cindy Mills, 1408 121st Avenue. Elevation where my kitchen window would look out at this property, I would not, I'd be looking at roofs. You know, the steep grade between the top of their, everything that's being built, no matter how high it is, there is a slope that goes down to that piece of property from mine. I have two stories. I look at my second off my back, excuse me, off my back balcony to see the woods, to see all the wildlife. Every morning, I enjoy it. To have this approved and to go through and to be built would be a tragedy. It would take away from such beauty that is there. It'd be devastating. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Annette Sloniker. We live at 1414 120th Lane Northwest. We have lived there for 32 years. I also agree with the nature that we have living back there on a daily basis. All the animals that everybody has stated, they are there. Concerns that I have, what about lighting? What type of lighting are they thinking of using, and how is that going to impact the neighborhood homes around that? The access to 121st. If you're going eastbound on 121st, you're coming over a hill. Where's that driveway access planned to be, and how is that going to impact the flow on 121st? With the size of the units, three bedrooms, you know, we reach a point where we have four adults. They're all going to have B-licensed drivers with vehicles. Where are these vehicles going to go? Where are these vehicles going to go? I can tell you almost every home in our neighborhood that now sells, there seems to be three to four adults that come in, and there are numerous cars in the driveway and or on the street at night. I mean, it's just, I, I don't comprehend what, what they see in this. If it's gonna be rental, who's going to be the association owner? You know, what, what information are we gonna have to be able to find out how they maintain their properties? And is there gonna be any soil brought in, and how's that going to change the elevation in regards to the wetland that we have? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, my name's Clark Hillen. I live at one two one seven zero Bluebird Circle, and you've probably heard that circle quite a bit already this evening. I moved there about two years ago, and one of the main reasons that I purchased my place, because I felt it was more of a home type of situation. And not that I'm not afraid for people that need a home, but that's why I purchased my house in that area. And I just think by putting that in, it just gonna ch- it'll, I, I don't know, but I think it's gonna low, and I don't wanna make this my top. Most of my stuff, I agree with everything that's been said, but I think it's gonna lower my property value, because people come in, they're gonna see all those vehicles coming out, that's a forty mile an hour street there, and that, in the morning, when cars are gonna be coming out, also, it's a major, there's a lot of bikes, that's a major bike route, you go over there going over to bunker. I think there's gonna be a lot more accidents in that area because of that situation and the lighting, the berm, but, uh, like I said, it's, it's, it's not something that I think that we should put into that unit because what everybody else has really stated.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak? Last call. We'll close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission. Commission, thoughts, concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolky.
I guess I'll just, um, I'll start just by complimenting the applicant in terms of the, um, in recalling the, um, original, um, design application to site plan from 2022. There was a lot of dialogue that took place, um, during that, uh, that time, and, um, I can see from, um, the changes that are being proposed here, that the applicant took great care and consideration for those comments, the playground, things like this were incorporated in, the setback is incorporated in. Um, so the things that we did address and we asked, um, you know, I think they've done a nice job, um, responding to that. I, I think it's a, it's, it's a really a nice, um, you know, a, a nice site plan. I think that, um, this space, just from the, the renderings, um, appears that, um, you know, it, it would be a compliment to that area, especially, um, you know, knowing, um, this, this person's, um, you know, kind of background with other pop, properties in the, in this area as well. Um, I think that, that it would be a, a nice, um, you know, a nice development. I don't know enough about, I don't, I was gonna ask about the, some of the more specific concerns about the driveway length and just, I guess, addressing that, um, that, um, uh, the elevation question, things like that. I, I have to presume that those things are looked at by our engineers and by the designers and so forth, so, um, I'll leave that maybe to have our, um, sitting, um, maybe respond to those items, but I think the work that's gone into this, I, I would be in support of it.
Commissioner Geisler.
Um, I guess, uh, does the city have a comment specifically to the section eight dash eight and how that gets administered by the city?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Butchakoni.
Count on the lawyer to look at the ordinances, right? Um, so I looked up the ordinance referenced by the gentleman, and he's correct about it not allowing some slope there. First of all, it doesn't define slope and, or how it should be measured, uh, but we can accept a commonly used definition for that. The bigger piece is there's actually an exemption right at the beginning of that chapter that says the chapter doesn't apply if the watershed management district signs off on it within the previous six months. I'm not the engineer or the watershed district, but I know that's a standard part of our process, and in fact, uh, much of what was raised regarding specificity and things like that, that's not really site plan sort of detail, that's engineering detail and building code detail. We will ensure that every project is up to code, both as a rental unit and, uh, anything. That's what we do, that's, that's kind of our job.
And then, Mr. Chair, if I may continue.
Mr. Commissioner Geisler.
And then, Mr. Patzer, just speaking to the density commentary, um, so this site is zoned moderate, correct? And then the site to the north is moderate on Bluebird Cir- that Bluebird Circle is moderate?
Correct.
And then to the south is moderate?
Correct.
And to the east is moderate?
Correct.
Across the wetland there.
Across the wetland.
Yeah. And then the only, the only low density is to the west there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I had one question for the applicant, if they would. Um, at, at the previous hearing, you'd spoken to the amenities within the site as far as the construction of the sustainability focus. Um, there's many things that are packet as well citing sustainability items. I was wondering if you would mind talking about the, the amenities that are going into those, um, that are making these a little higher end, um, or a little more, uh, modern townhome designs?
Yeah, one of the things we're trying to do is really to take a look at how to conserve energy and how to conserve, uh, people's utility bills, and so we're looking at, uh, our garages are actually heated within the walls, um, so that we can have this heat pump, um, which saves a lot of water, also in terms of the walls and the sidings and the insulation. So everything we've done is really to try to make these very energy efficient. Um, I do think that we have a lot of land, I, I'm, I'm addressing another issue now. We have a number of rental units in this city, and I think if you were to drive by them, you will see that Sand Creek and Caroline and Unity are really kept up really well, and we have a lot of space around them. And so while these units are in a, a space, the, all that wetland, where, yes, I agree, we have deer who walk through the Camilla Rose property all the time. We have, um, a fox, we have wild turkeys, like dozens of wild turkeys. So we're always about saving the land. We've bought conservation land across the creek. Um, so I hear people's concern, but in terms of, this is probably walking distance really from our campus, we have done a, I think we've done a really a good job of having open land for animals to continue, for people to walk. Walking paths are along all of our properties. Um, we were actually the first ones to have the path, and so I'm very proud of that. Um, so the whole idea was how do you do an energy conservation that takes in the environment, takes in the, the wildlife that's there? Um, we do not do construction to sell. That's just not the business we're in. So if the city was to say, these are only for sale, we would walk away. We're basically a rental, we take care of people, they're a part of our community. So I'd like to defend the rental business, because I think you can have a really good rental site, you can take good care of it, they can be a community as much as owner occupied. I think it's the way you manage, the way you treat people.
Thank you.
So.
Uh, I have a couple of questions for you as well. Is there a dimension on the size of the garages? How deep are they?
Uh, there's a picture.
Back up to the microphone, please.
Yeah, there is, there's a.
Back to the microphone, please.
There is a site plan in, I'm sorry. There is a site plan in the packet, which would then give the, the fact that two cars fit in there, and it would give the dimension of the garage.
I don't see anything that has, uh, measurements for dimensions.
Uh, you're right. Uh, no, but I can find that out if you would like. We can make a call and find it out right now.
And then a second question is, what is the length of the driveway from outside of the garage to the roadway?
Okay. I'm gonna make that call. Last time we had, uh, our architect visually on call, but the system doesn't, uh, allow that or doesn't work that way, so we'll give him a quick call and get those dimensions.
Thank you. And a question for, for staff, uh, possibly Mr. Butchakoni, is there anything in the ordinance that requires a particular length or depth for a driveway to allow a vehicle to be parked outside of the garage?
I can appreciate the question, Mr. Chair, and I love that you thought I would know that. They're a better bet than I am, though.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Um, these driveways would not be for parking, um, essentially. The, um, whether there's, uh, a required length, I believe it is, um, twenty feet. Um, it, it is something that I would have to look up, and I don't know off the top of my head, um, but the, the driveways were not counted by staff as, as parking areas. Um, and the, um, if, if the planning commission should choose to add that condition, it could be, um, something that the applicant would add into leases that the driveways, um, were, are no parking areas. Essentially, they're only to access the garages and not to park vehicles in, uh, and that's something that the owner of the property would be able to enforce.
So there's nothing in our ordinance requiring parking space available in the driveway?
There's nothing in the ordinance requiring that, that the driveway accessing the garage be space that is also somewhere that you could park your vehicle, correct?
Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, Mr. Patzer, so typically, we would u- we would see that because the developers are trying to use the driveway to meet the parking minimums, but in this case, this application has met the parking minimums without driveway parking. Is that essentially why we're not seeing it?
Commissioner Geisler, that is correct.
Okay. So, but to the, to the extent that, uh, I know you've stated it, but I wanna be clear, this does meet the, the parking minimums as written in code right now.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heikle.
I, I'm wondering, is, uh, twenty-four hour parking allowed on one hundred and twenty-first?
No.
No?
Wouldn't be in the wintertime.
Huh?
Be no parking in the wintertime.
No, but I mean, out of time.
The garage itself is about sixteen feet by twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet?
And the space outside the garage is sixteen by ten.
So the sixteen is the width, so it's ten feet from the door to the, to the roadway?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So you wouldn't be able to fit even a smart car into that?
No, I think, uh, we weren't planning to use the garages, space outside of it as parking to meet our, our, you know, our, the, the ratio that the city wants. We wanted parking spaces to meet that ratio, 'cause other words, it's just like, one of the things we looked at was even, um, I called the city and asked about these double garages, you know, where you park in front of each other. They're getting much more popular now, but it means the, that you have to be moving cars all the time. So our parking ratio meant that we had parking spaces, not counting the, the, the space behind the garage. The garage should be for those two cars, and we shouldn't be counting the spaces behind the garage, is my feeling. That's why we have the additional spaces. And I think we're a little bit over code, but, but I mean, I agree with people who are making comments, there's, there's homes with like six, seven, eight cars. But our job is to, to meet code, to, is to meet city code.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolky.
Mr. Butchakoni, is it something we can add another provision that would request, um, the applicant to make those no parking spaces? Is that something we can do, or? I, I know, that's why I asked the question. Do we allow them to just go ahead and enforce as needed? Is, I, and I'm trying to just answer both the public's questions and...
Sir, m- m- Mr. Chair and Miss Commissioner Smolky, are, are you talking about the driveway?
The driveway area, yeah, exactly.
I hate to be the lawyer, but may, maybe? I don't know for certain. Um, it would have be, have to be something that they put into the lease with.
Correct.
Their, their tenants and...
Is it something we add? Again, just to respond, it, you, the answer can be not, don't recommend it, I'm okay with that, but is it, um, is it something we can say, we'll consider, uh, no parking, you know, clause in the lease agreements or something like that, just to acknowledge addressing that? It seems to be a concern, so that, that due to, because the parking spaces available comply, right, with the requirements, right? A consideration, though, for making those non-parking spaces, is that something we can do?
I am comfortable with a condition, if the commission were so inclined, that says, require tenants to only park in designated parking areas. When we start getting to specific spots and telling them where, that's not something I'm comfortable with this body doing.
I like that, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Butchakoni, as far as, we, we have a, a handful of PUDs that also have private drives in other spaces, do we do parking enforcement on those any, anywhere else in the city? Or are we, or is that up to whoever owns that private drive?
Mr. Chair, may I have ten seconds here? Mr. Chair and Commission, as I understand it, this development street is a, a private street, so, uh, they would control the parking within the site. They would not control, however, anything on a public road nearby. Uh, so the winter parking ban that we all know about, uh, and I deal with in my other role quite frequently, that would apply here, uh, but onsite, that's under their control.
So the entirety of the parking and the private drives and all that is up to the property owner to maintain for fire access, emergency access, anything else through that site?
Yes, and in fact, I'd say it's their obligation, and quite often, when rental properties come up for renewal, we reexamine pro- uh, the parking requirements and the minimums to make sure they're meeting those.
So that would, in that case, that would be no different than a private drive in any other apartment that we're doing elsewhere, where they would be managing it themselves already?
Yeah, look at it more as, I, look at the parking situation much like the, uh, uh, a multi-tenant building. That's, that's the way you should really look at the parking here. There's minimums, they have to meet them, and we will make sure they're doing that, and they're not making a giant mess.
Thank you.
Do we have anything such as, uh, bike racks?
I'm sure yes. Yeah, I think it's somewhere located in.
Back to the microphone, please.
Mr. Chair, around the circle, there's some bike racks indicated by that building, uh, between the building and the, and the circle to the south. Um, it's on the, really zoomed in, they're very small, or yeah. Yep, southeast there. There's one indic- some indicated there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolky.
Eventually, before we go to make a motion, I'm just going to ask if Mr. Patzner could put the, yeah, the conditions back up on the monitor, so we could review those again. Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Patzner, the item five up there meets your requirements or desire for the three-foot berm?
Correct.
Thank you.
And Mr. Patzner, number six, APP, what is...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's a typo that should say "all."
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Commissioner Smolky.
In Planning Case twenty-four dash twenty-three, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions, which I'll state because of some of the changes. So all engineering comments be addressed, all sustainability comments be considered, the applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city, park dedication in the amount of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which is equivalent to fourteen, excuse me, one thousand four hundred and ten dollars times thirty-five town home units, be paid prior to issuance of building permit. Final landscaping must meet requirements detailed in City of Coon Rapids Landscaping Standard Document per City Code Section eleven dash six oh four dot two eleven. All parking areas onsite to be lit to one foot candle. All signage is subject to separate sign permits, compliance with Title eleven of City Code, and an additional condition, that tenants will be required to park in designated spaces.
Second.
Motion by Smolky, second by Geisler. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heickel.
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Smolky. I compliment the petitioner for coming back and reworking and doing the due diligence that I think, I think it shows, and I think it's a good plan, and I would vote to approve it.
All right. Before we take the vote, I just want to thank everyone that came to the meeting here tonight and got up and spoke, gave us your thoughts. You need to understand that all property in Coon Rapids is owned by someone and is available to them to be developed. It's nice to have it as wildlife property, but at some time, your property was wild and controlled or inhabited by numerous animals. The city looks at all the requirements, such as the slope issue, and is handled by the engineering department prior to the building permits being issued. And I, again, just want to thank everyone for coming and speaking tonight. Thank you. With that, we have the motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion carries, this is a decision by the Planning Commission, and can be appealed to the City Council within ten business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
You have to talk with staff after the meeting. All right, our next case is Planning Case twenty-four dash twenty-four, conditional use permit for alloy wheel repair at two-four-two-three Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, J.K. Beetle Holdings LLC. Mr. Behringer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner members. I have today, before you, a request for a conditional use permit. So this is at the building located at two-three-two, two-four-two-three, excuse me, Coon Rapids Boulevard, approximately one point zero nine acre lot. We're looking at just the northern unit of the existing building, just under ten thousand square feet, formerly the home of a dance studio, now vacant, but has been purchased by the applicant, and Anytime Fitness is just to the south of this unit and shares a wall with the unit in question. Zoning for the site, we are in the general commercial and River Rapids overlay district, surrounded here by high and low density residential, as well as office and general commercial, and our comp plan guides this property for commercial mixed use. So what's being proposed is a CUP for a new automobile repair major business. The building would include spaces for storage, staging, production offices, and a showroom. The site currently has twenty-six existing parking spaces, and that meets our code, and all business activities would be contained within the building. So some more specifics here about the business operations. Alloy wheel repair cleans, straightens, welds, paints, powder coats, polishes, and then polishes damaged wheels. They have nine employees, can expect twenty-five to fifty customers per week. They operate Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM, have two delivery vans that come and go throughout the day. On average, they're processing and repairing about a hundred and fifty wheels per week. And there is a difference in powder coating versus painting. A large majority of these wheels are powder coated, and for those who aren't familiar, powder coating uses static charge to attract the material to the object. So it's quite different than spray painting. They, on an average week, powder coat one hundred to one hundred and twenty wheels versus spray painting, just thirty to fifty wheels per week. And a little more about the spray painting, they said that they use about one ounce of paint per wheel. I put this in comparison to painting an entire car, that would occur one point five gallons, so way less paint is needed here, and far fewer numbers of wheels are spray painted. They also made note in the application that no clear, liquid clear coats are used, which can often be a lot more hazardous than spray paint. So staff found no evidence that the business would cause harm to the public health, safety, or general welfare. The business won't be hazardous to surrounding land uses. Wheels are the only auto part that will be repaired, so we won't see any crashed or disabled long-term storage of vehicles onsite. Any vehicles that require wheels to be removed will be done inside of the building. Their machines and the equipment that they use is all self-contained units that use highly advanced filtering systems that eliminate exhaust of particulates and fumes, so we won't have any paint smell outside of the building, nor will we have much noise, little to no noise heard outside of the building during operations. And finally, they use an eco-friendly product called Green Solve, and this is used to clean the wheels. It's a product that's safe to go down the drain and be processed by water treatment plants. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with these following conditions, and I will read through these, they are all very specific to this use. One, the business will only work on wheels and not expand to other automobile parts or evolve into a body shop that provides general repair, rebuilding, or conditioning of engines, motor vehicles, or trailers, including bodywork, framework, and major painting service. Number two, no paint smells detected in the attached unit, which is currently Anytime Fitness, or outside of the building. Number three, little to no noise is heard in the attached unit, which is currently Anytime Fitness, or outside of the building. Number four, all business operations, including storage, are to be contained within the building. Number five, this CUP is specifically tied to the two-four-two-three unit of the existing building on the subject property. If the wheel repair business wishes to expand into the other units of the building, or if the building is expanded, demolished, or rebuilt, an amendment to this CUP will be required. Number six, all signage is subject to separate sign permits. Number seven, compliance with Title eleven of the city code. And finally, number eight, to ensure the conditional use is not detrimental to public health, safety, and general welfare, the use shall meet all applicable building and fire codes to ensure criteria is met for the Building Inspection Division to issue a certificate of occupancy. And a correction from our agenda, this is a public hearing item. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Behringer?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Just a minor clarification. If a building's demolished, doesn't the CUP go away? Because the building isn't there, or does it stay with the property?
Commissioner, the CUP does run with the land.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Behringer, I have a question. In the report that we received, one sentence caught my eye. Any vehicle that requires the wheels to be taken off would be done inside the building, but I don't see any doors that would allow for vehicles to be pulled inside the building.
You're talking about like a garage door of some kind to allow for that? May I ask the applicant to address that question for me?
There's a garage door.
Could you come up to my...
Yes, sorry. My name is Jason with Alloy Wheel Repair Specialist. Currently, we're at ten-twenty-five Tomlin Avenue in Shoreview. Yeah, there is one garage door in the building, currently.
Could you point out on the...
It's right there, I don't know how to...
Yep, so the applicant here is pointing to the entrance in the, would be the northeast corner of the building, at the top of the site there. West?
Northwest.
Northwest. Excuse me.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Behringer at this time? All right, anything the petitioner would like to add?
We just, you know, obviously, we're moving, we currently are in Shoreview right now. We've outgrown the space we have in Shoreview. We're, you know, really excited about moving into Coon Rapids. We have the ability to spread out a little bit more in the building, so, you know, we're just really excited to hopefully be a part of Coon Rapids, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Question for the applicant there. So typically with welding, there's usually a little bit of cleanup, grinding, or polishing at times. Where will that be happening? And you kind of, it looks like you've got your powder finishing towards the shared wall. Whereabouts would you be doing any of that?
So in the plan, so the prep room, there's a bunch of downdraft benches that are meant for grinding and sanding and stuff, so they would all be brought over there to do any cleanup.
Okay, and do you believe that that separation is enough to keep the noise down from the adjacent property?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heickel.
Excuse my ignorance with this, but can you, this is a service that I'm not familiar with at all. Is this like high-end vehicles or special, I mean...
Yeah, we're kind of, we're kind of a rare breed, right? Not a lot of us around. It's, we fix all wheels on all vehicles, you know, whether it's a Chevy or a Rolls-Royce. You know, so it's, today, if you look at the cost of replacement wheels, we're talking about like a factory wheel on a vehicle, the average price nowadays is seven hundred and fifty dollars to replace a wheel, if you were to buy it from the dealership. We, a lot of times, are fixing wheels for customers for under two hundred dollars a piece. So, a lot of people are happy to walk through our door when they don't have to spend seven hundred dollars to replace a wheel, so...
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions at this time? All right, we may have more later.
Yes, sir.
All right, we need a public hearing on this matter. So at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case twenty-four dash twenty-four, a conditional use permit for alloy wheel repair at two-four-two-three Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, J.K. Beetle Holdings LLC. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none? Closed public hearing. Let me comment to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I'll make a motion that in Planning Case twenty-four dash twenty-four, we approve the conditional use permit for a new automotive repair business with the listed conditions in our packet.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Noel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion carries, this is a decision by the Planning Commission, and can be appealed to the City Council within ten business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to other business. Mr. Patzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'll just briefly go over what we have on the agenda for the September meeting. I don't want to get anyone too excited, but we may end up not having a meeting in September because we don't currently have any applications in. However, there is a housekeeping item that does need to be done soon, that would be a city-initiated item, which would be a comprehensive plan amendment to reduce the floor of the low-density residential land use designation from three to two-point-two-five. And the purpose for this would be that there are some constrained infill lots, some infill lots in the city that have not been developed, that are zoned, low-density residential and guided low-density residential, that would be essentially impossible to develop at three units because of some difficulties, the lots, such as wetlands, the shape of the lot, et cetera. The Met Council would not issue sewer permits for any new development that is below the floor of our low-density residential land use designation. We do have space in the overall density of the city to reduce that floor and still meet the density required of us by the Met Council, and so we would be able to reduce it to two-point-two-five and still meet that density requirement, and this would open up several smaller lots in the city for development that otherwise would just be undevelopable. And this is something that would need to go through the Planning Commission first and have a public hearing. This may be something that we bring forward in September, in which case it would be the only item. It may be something that we would bring forward in October, in which case, if there are no applications outside of the city application, it may also be the only item. So it depends on a couple of external factors whether this ends up being brought forward in September or October, but I will hopefully find out next week and be able to let you guys know whether or not the meeting in September is planned to be canceled. Other than that, we have no external applications for the September meeting. So that's all I have for you. Thanks.
Commissioner, have any, anything on your other business?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Patzner, have you seen that the Imagine Twenty-Five Regional Development Guide is now open for public comment from the Met Council?
Commissioner Geisler, I have not seen this. Would you be able to tell us about it?
For what it's worth, the Met Council Imagine Twenty-Fifty is the next comprehensive plan. It is currently open for public comment. You can search that online and find it at your leisure. You can sign up and provide public comment. It's open for everyone. That covers everything from land use and housing, but as well as transportation, water, and parks and rec. So there's lots of areas to go in, but it is open for public comment, so please take a look.
Thank you.
Move to approve. Move to adjourn. Mr. Patzner, I would like to reiterate my requests to strongly recommend that petitioners have material and color samples.
I'll second that.
When they bring in their site plans. We've gotten away from that, and it's, makes it really difficult for us to know what we're approving.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolky.
Do we know what other communities are doing? Do they require or get a lot of samples at the Planning Commission meetings?
Commissioner Smolky, I can only speak to other communities that I've... Commissioner Smokey, I can only speak to other communities that I've worked for, been to meetings for, and it's a mixed bag. I think some communities require it of their applicants and some don't. And there are some applicants that will bring them to any community that they're applying in regardless of whether it's required. So I think you see both. But I'm not able to speak on whether it's more common or less common because I just don't know the general trend. This is definitely something that staff will request of applicants going forward and make sure that they know that that's something that the planning commission will be expecting.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Heickel.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Heickel, second by Nabla. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meetings adjourned.